I call this meeting of the only city council August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Please rise and say the pledge allegiance remains standing as the Reverend Roger Boyd says their opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our most holy God, we bring before you these servants to whom you've entrusted leadership here in the city of Alney. And we pray tonight that every deliberation that they make, Lord, you would give them the wisdom that they need, that you would, uh, Lord oversee their discussions. Lord, we thank you for those who've come tonight to participate in this meeting, and we just pray that everything would be done decently and in good order, and Lord, that everything, uh, would go forth in a spirit of cooperation and unity. And we just pray that all would be done to benefit the residents of this city. We ask all of this your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Farenbacher.
Here.
Councilwoman Icorst.
Present.
Councilman Iyer.
Present.
Mayor Lambert.
Here. First item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing them, we'll move on. Presentation of the consent agenda, which includes to approve minutes of the council meeting on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, prove unauthorized payments of accounts payable, August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, raffle license from the Rolling Thunder, eleven, chapter eleven, Illinois chapter three, sorry, raffle license from Richland County Post Thirty of the American Legion Number One and Richland County Post Thirty of the American Legion Number Two raffle license. These items need to be removed from the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Request for a Class B liquor license for S. and M. Patel LLC doing business as BNL Package Liquors.
Hello, everybody.
Good, how are you?
All right. So my name is Mukun Patel, and, uh, we are from Chicago. And, uh, we're just trying to take over the, uh, liquor license. We have the question for that license, and, uh, we are trying to improving that business, and, uh, we are very new person in this business.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, or a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request for a Class B liquor license for I.L. Patel LLC doing business as Arcade Party Supply.
Yeah, they're, they're the same.
Same thing. Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action, presentation acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five financial audit and twenty-four, twenty-five tax increment financing audit.
Good evening. I am Krista McLaren here, uh, with Kemper CPA Group to present the audit for the financial statements of the city for the fiscal year ended April thirtieth. So in front of you are two, um, balanced financial statements. One of the, the thicker one is the set of financial statements for the city. That includes all of the funds of the city of Alney. The smaller one, that is our audit of the compliance of the TIP districts, the two TIP districts, um, in existence. So I'll touch base on the smaller one in a minute, um, but first of all, most of our time will be spent on the, the thicker city's financial statements in front of you. And there's obviously a lot of information in there, and we won't go through all of that by any means, but if you ever have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me at any point in time with any questions that you might have. Um, so I'll just go through a few key ques- or a few key things in regards to the audit. Um, and first of all, let me kind of explain our role in this and how this works. So we, as Kemper CPA Group, we come in and we perform audit procedures over the financial statements of the city. So the management of the city takes responsibility for these financial statements and the numbers. We then come in, perform procedures to ensure that they are materially correct in accordance with what's called the modified cash basis of accounting. What that means is revenue is recorded when cash is received and expenditures are recorded when cash is dispersed. So cash in, cash in is your, cash in, cash out is your income and expenses. And we have issued what we consider a clean audit opinion on the city's financial statements. That means that the statements that are in front of you materially reflect the financial position of the city as of the year ended April thirtieth. Um, the, the city's financial statements are in very good shape. We also evaluate internal controls over some processes, and I'm pleased to report that we did not have any internal control findings, um, as it relates to any of your processes over the financials. I will direct your attention to, we'll start on page six. We'll go through just a few numbers. Um, I won't try to, to make this very long, but just to, to go through a couple high-level items. First of all, on page six, the left-hand column, you can see that's your general fund. That is your general funds of the city that can be used for multiple purposes. They're not specific to water or sewer or any one specific purpose. You can see the total cash is ten million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Um, but then I'll point out, you'll see these four numbers then down towards the bottom in that column, because not all of that ten point six million is available to be used for any purpose. So for example, the four hundred and twenty-two thousand is considered restricted, meaning it is restricted by either property taxes that were levied or specific donations that have to be used for a specific purpose. Um, it has to, it can only be used for those specific purposes. Things like the police retention grant that's been received, or the fire, pin- fire funds, drug funds, et cetera, that have to be spent for sp- spent on specific purposes. Next is assigned. That, those are items that the council has assigned internally. Uh, that one point one million is for storm sewer. Then the next line of two point two million, that is committed by ordinance of the city council, um, to be spent primarily on, on roads and other big projects such as that. So that leaves you with this six million, eight hundred and eleven thousand down below there that's, says unassigned. So that is essentially your, your spending capability. What you have to spend on any purpose is that six point eight million. That represents approximately one year's worth of operating expenses of the city, meaning wages, utilities, every, things like that. So the city's general fund is, like I said, is about one year's worth of expenses on hand. That's an unassigned that can be used for those general purposes. That is a very good amount, but it's also not an excess amount. So I say that to just mention that the city is in very good financial shape, but there's also not slush or extra funds just to sit there, um, and be spent, um, unwisely. So, um, the next column then is the only business district. That you can see has two point six million in it. And then the other column, we'll go through that breakdown in a little bit, but that has three point nine million. That includes your motor fuel tax, IMRAF, social security, tourism, um, those types of fun, your TIP districts as well. Then on to the next page, page seven. I'll just point out quickly, the third row from the bottom. Think of that as your, that says net change in fund balance. Think of that as your net income. That's the amount by which either income exceeded expenditures, or in the case of the general fund there, expenditures exceeded revenues by seventy-two thousand in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the business district had income because you've not been spending that money yet. Uh, the one point four million and all of the other funds of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And then on page nine, this is your water and wastewater. So your water, total cash of five point nine million, wastewater of four point two million. You have notes payable of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand in, in water and about eight hundred and eighty thousand in wastewater. And then similarly down below, those bottom four number, or bottom three numbers, I should say, you can see how much of that cash is a- available to be spent on various purposes, whether it's restricted, assigned by the council, or unrestricted. In the unrestricted, the water has three point nine million, of which, that's approximately about a two years' worth of expenses, whereas wastewater, um, is, is about the same, that two point four million. So that is a little bit higher than where your general fund sits. Um, but I'd like to point out that, you know, the council has been increasing rates slowly, as opposed to, in order for the grant, the future grants, um, that require your rates to be at a certain level. Um, and so that's part of it, and then part of it is, you know, building up for those large projects, which is, um, on the, which are on the horizon. Um, on page twelve, that is your fire and poli- fire and police pension funds. So these are the funds that are to, that are held to be paid out for pensions for the police and fire in the future. Two point eight million for fire and eight million for p- police. The majority of all of those funds are in the state's, um, investments pool that they are required to be in those pools. You don't have the ability to go invest in them anymore like you used to. They're held by the state. And then on page forty-two, towards the very back, uh, I'll just point out quickly that your, on page forty-two, that your municipal retirement fund has cash of about eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's about two point two times worth of your annual expenditures. We typically say two to three years of cash on hand whenever it's a levied fund, meaning you're levying property taxes for, for those expen- future expenses. Two to three years of cash on hand is a reasonable amount per state statute, and you have two point two years. So you're, you're sitting just, just right there. Levying insurance, you have four hundred and three thousand. Um, that one is a little bit closer to about four times of your expenses. However, insurance costs are continuing to rise significantly. Um, and so that's something that's, that's expected to be, to be used in the very near future. The TIP fund, you can see that fund has six hundred and ninety-five thousand in it. Um, the, the TIP funds must have a plan in place to use those funds in the future. Um, that's just how, how a TIP district works. You've got to have that money, um, set aside for specific plans in the future. And if not, then you run the risk of you have to actually repay those TIP funds back, um, to the constituents. And then you can see the motor fuel tax of one point four million cash on hand. Um, the next page shows your, your tourism, the Christmas lights, um, and then the newer TIP district having the sixty-nine thousand in cash. So any questions? I know this is a lot of information, but, um, I just kind of wanted to give you a high-level overview um, of, of the city's finances. Like I said, it's in good financial shape, but there's also not, you know, a lot of excess cushion sitting around though either. And my understanding is that the, the TIP district has good plans in place currently. Just keep in mind that, you know, those, you have to continue to always have those plans in place to use those funds. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Yes.
Your, uh, office hours might combine, just.
If you want to call and schedule an appointment, that would be great. Yep. I may not always physically be there.
I would accept a motion to accept the findings of the audit. Second? Julia, rise.
I know.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action, all trip plan for the tennis court parking lot improvements, Mr. Bradby. Mr. Bridges.
Uh, I'll start off, Mike. At the, at the last council meeting, we discussed, uh, parking lot at the tennis court, and we discussed doing it in asphalt. After looking at it a little closer, we determined it would probably be cost efficient to do it in concrete and our own people doing the work. So that's what we, um, pursuing, I think. An opportunity right by most of the council. It will save us, do us some money, but, uh, be a lot better service in the long term.
I'm sure it's cheaper doing it this way, and it definitely lasts longer. Do we ever, when we're doing our estimates, do we include what we spend on labor? I, I get that it's in-house, but I mean, when you're looking, when you're comparing a contractor versus, um, doing it in-house with our workers, do we ever say it's going to spend X amount of hours with our workers and put those two costs side by side?
We did know this particular, that it could be done, and we have, I have done that before, but it's not typically done. Our guys do it, they do it in their spare time, more or less. They're not going to get on this project. It's like sidewalks that they do, they just do them when they have extra time to get on them. When they did the trail at the park, they did it in, uh, phases, and that's the same way that it is parking lot. Won't do it all at once. It'd be incremental over a few months.
How, uh, how long do they think it would take?
I, I don't know.
It sounds good to me.
I'm all about doing stuff in-house. Our street department's already saved us a ton of money on some street replacements around Alney. A stupendous amount of money. So if they can pour this concrete, I'm all for it.
We have excellent, uh, workforce crew and, uh, mostly, and all the departments actually, they do excellent jobs, concrete, streets, sidewalks.
Questions, comments, motion to approve?
Do we have to put curbs in it too, parking curbs? Is anybody?
There has to be some parking blocks. Put in, because the concrete parking lot will be flush with, uh, concrete during next quarter.
We, we can handle that fine.
Questions, comments, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed. Vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to accept quote for repair of the Wayne Street lift station and wait formal bidding procedures, Mr. Burke.
Uh, our lift stations have two pumps, and, uh, one of them went, went down, and the other one is, uh, is in bad condition. So the sewer supervisors recommended replacing both of them at one time, and that cost twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to do them. That's a contract job with straight for pump. So we went ahead and we had to go ahead and do one. Went ahead and contracted to do two.
Questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Have we used this company before?
Yes, many times.
They're replacing both pumps, right?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
This is twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to repair both pumps in that last paragraph. I wanted to make sure it was replace.
Replace, yes.
Okay.
We, is there no other company that offers these kinds of pumps? Is that why we're waiving the bid?
I'm not familiar with the brand, but typically they, um, you know, individual brands have certain companies that work on them.
So, so.
Straight for is probably the only one that works on it.
So is it sole source, you think?
Questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to accept bid for demolition of ten oh nine East Chestnut Street. Mr. Caldwell.
Uh, last Wednesday, we opened bids for demolition at one thousand nine East Chestnut. Um, as you see in the notes, this is a house we've been working on since twenty twenty. People were living in it, so we could not do anything until the point they moved out. As soon as they moved out, we jumped on it. City attorney did our title search and got everything out. He actually has knowledge of this house.
Been in it.
So it was one we definitely went down. Yeah, the pictures are not due justice. I hope you all drew, drove by it. And you can tell how many times we've had code violations. Police have not had much problem other than opable vehicle, which is now moved. Uh, but junk, weeds, dangerous building ongoing since twenty twenty. It is an expensive house to demo. We have ten thousand, over ten thousand in asbestos remediation, and then it's a two-story with a basement. It's a huge house. So the bid, I was pretty happy with the bid. The last two-story we did was the one on Walnut that the fire department now has on property too. It was thirteen, seven a year ago, so fifteen, five, I thought, a year later, and a little bit bigger house was not bad.
Questions, comments?
With this, we'll have, Jane, thirteen thousand plus left in the demo budget for this year. County board should be voting on that other property we bought on North Mill. So we'll have to work on it. I don't know if we can get it all done for thirteen thousand, but we'll be right there.
They'll be removing the basement completely.
Flat.
Suitable fill.
Flat, be completely flat, mobile, and we're done. And, uh, Hemrich got the bid, and he's been very good at his work. He's one of the better ones we have.
Do we usually go through the demolition budget this quickly?
No. I mean, this house, usually we can get two houses down to the price of this one, so it's really hitting it. And last year's budget, we couldn't get the house done before the end of the year, so that demo rolled onto this year. So otherwise, we had money left over last year.
Do you have a count, Dallas, of other additional houses that would fall into where they need to be demolished?
I've got like seven fairly bad ones on my board in my office that we're continually working on, trying to either get the homeowner. Usually every year we have five or six houses that a homeowner will tear down, but that's working with them and talking to them. And then generally we tear down three to four. But generally we can do a house, you know, our last house was under ten thousand. So this house will be about twenty-six. So that tells you how much, that budget is mistaken, almost half our budget. But it is definitely a house that needs to come down. Animals living in the basement.
The, uh, the asbestos abatement, uh, do we, so we always do an inspection on it, but do, uh, are we always spending, uh, that a- that amount whenever we're tearing them down, or is that just dependent on whether the?
Depends on what they find. The Walnut house, the asbestos there, on that big two-story, was only thirty-eight hundred because there wasn't much asbestos.
Yeah.
This one here has asbestos siding on it. It's a two-story, so that's a lot of asbestos. Unfortunately, we have to do that, but state statute says we have to do remediation.
I'm not surprised that a call said there's a lot of house there.
Mm-hmm. It's a huge house. I, I bet thirty years ago, it was a nice house.
Oh, sure.
Unfortunately, it's past its prime now.
I'll, uh, make a motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Well, next item on the agenda is a resolution to accept the qualification statement for engineering services for the North Avenue Re-
I hope not while I did it.
I saw Caldwell. Saw two Caldwell there, and it threw me off. Uh, resolution to accept bid for replacement of the HVAC system at City Hall. Mr. Caldwell.
Um, we opened those bids last Wednesday also. Uh, Dan's Electric was the cheapest. Happy to say it was over fifteen hundred under budget for one. Um, so that'll help out. Uh, we had quite a few bids, and three of them were very close. His bid was eighty-four, twenty-eight, fifty-seven. And as you feel it in here, it's a little warm, and it's about to die, so if we can get a motion approved, that would like to get that in as soon as possible.
Questions, comments, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Caldwell. And now then we will move on to resolution to accept the qualification statement for engineering services for the North Avenue Reconstruction Project. Mr. Burke.
And that is just as the mayor stated, it is qualifications for engineering. During this process, we send out solicit qualifications from a minimum of three different companies. They submit for qualifications. We do a grading process, a review, and, um, then recommend to the council who we think would be the better qualifying, uh, engineer for our city. And currently, uh, we, we went through that, and Charleston Engineering is who the committee has selected.
Questions, comments?
My family's done stuff with Charleston Engineering for probably fifty years. I find them extremely trustworthy.
I wonder how our city engineer feels about that. Yet questions, comments, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action, enterprise zone advertisement and cost sharing. Mr. Farenbacher, do you have anything on this?
So we, uh, about two or three months ago had, um, discussed advertising our enterprise zone. The program that would allow rebates, uh, not rebates, but, um, program that would help you get your sales tax money back from putting money into your house, spending, um, is it twenty thousand, I believe, for houses? And, um, then there's a certain amount for businesses as well that, um, would help with more investment in the community. And we spent about a hundred dollars on Facebook, and I don't know, we kind of got mixed results on that. But we, I was discussing with, uh, the mayor and a couple other members that perhaps some of the businesses around here who are in the business of providing these materials would be interested in potentially helping us to advertise with permanent signs outside of their location. If you sell building materials, it would be in your interest to, um, have people want to be purchasing materials at your store. Well, how convenient if the city happens to have a program that can help you with the sales tax abatement if you spend that X amount. I have found that just some of the, you know, the posting that I've done on social media, that it's been very effective in, um, spreading the awareness, just with, um, you know, just a simple, uh, sharing that post. So I think if we just would be willing to go in maybe half and half for a permanent sign, you know, maybe on somebody's fence or in front of somebody's, um, building, something like that. If we went half and half on a sign that just advertised and told people about our, um, enterprise zone, that it could be mutually beneficial for us and be very cost-effective as well. I don't know what would be the best material to do that, or what budget maybe we would want to set, and just say, okay, you are interested, we'll go half and half with you. Hundred fifty dollars per sign, or what does everybody else think? Does anybody have any suggestions?
How big a signs are you talking about?
Well, uh, I'll just, you know, we'll just take, uh, if they're interested, Hearns, I would think maybe a four-foot sign by four foot.
Can we investigate how much this will cost? Have you talked to anybody at Hearns?
I haven't talked to them, no. I wanted to see first what everybody else thought. I don't think this would be a very expensive venture. If they're interested, just come in, and maybe we could design it for them, and then just share half the cost. Is what I was thinking. Maybe we just approve it the same way that we do for, um, you know, our, our facade program, where we just get a picture of it, a concept of it, and if we approve it, we'll go ahead and order it for them. They can pay half the cost.
Questions, comments?
Just want to talk to a couple businesses and see what they think about this.
I, I think more information would be helpful to us.
Anything further?
I make a motion to table it until he comes back with more info.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on tabling? Seeing then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same time. Motion passes. We will revisit that in the future. Next item on the agenda, reports from elected and appointed officials. Status report, Mr. Burke.
In addition to what we discussed, we have, uh, had the opportunity to start working back in on the storm sewer over on Kitchell and, um, and also we expect various. And also we expect very soon to hear from the railroad, the possibility from the their engineering and consultants have approved our plan, they sent it to CSX and if they had to prove and send it back to us, that, that right by. That process is finally moving or it's been dead. I don't have anything additional on that. Basically, we've seen some movement there.
Any questions, comments for the city manager? Next item on the agenda, RCTC report. Nothing there. Chamber of Commerce report?
Okay, I have a few things. We just concluded the Sounds of Summer. That was over here at Bauer Park. We had six different musical acts. Last act was a local person. So that was very good. We had great weather most of the time and though it was hot. There will be an after hours, the chamber is holding at the Elks on August the twenty-sixth from five to seven. The bike classic will be coming up in September. Registration day of, so you'll be hearing about that again. Fifth Friday is August twenty-ninth from four to seven downtown. We'll have a lot of different groups and activities hopefully. And to get everybody ready for the citywide garage sale is September nineteenth and twentieth.
Very good. Thank you very much. Tourism Board report, nothing there. Anybody else have anything further before we go into closed session? I would accept a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the sale or lease price of real property. Acquisition of real property, appointment, employment, compensation, and performance of specific employees and litigation matters. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?